So I'm going to call this August 31st, meeting of the Concord Select Board to order. We don't have any items on the consent calendar today, so the first item on our agenda is a town manager's update. Town manager.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Folks got a chance to enjoy the nice day yesterday and today, get outside a little bit. Just a couple of quick things. The ZBA, the normal deadline for for submitting, for submitting appeals, it would be, would have been September 1st, but because of the election, they've extended it to Friday. So if people have questions about that, they should contact DPLM, but if you're filing an appeal for ZBA, submit all, it's not Friday. I know, I also, I know there's been a lot of interest in what's happening out at White Pond, and I know we've been kind of talking about it quite a bit internally. Kate is here as well. I think she attended a meeting of the White Pond Advisory Committee along with Jane, and I think there was a pretty robust discussion at that meeting, so I don't know, Kate, if you wanted to report on that?
Sure. Hi, everybody. Kate Hodges, Deputy Town Manager. So Delia Kaye and I attended virtually the meeting and heard a number of discussions about increased activity, et cetera. The bulk of the conversation that I participated in surrounded the White Pond Improvement Plan and the misinformation that was surrounding that, namely that the consultants that we hired inadvertently, or I think, in an attempt to be proactive, submitted a notice of intent to the conservation folks, natural resources, that had a number of diagrams and other, and other things that were. I'm sorry. Sorry, my son. Anyway, so a number of different things, and I think that the, the committee, perhaps in the neighborhood, felt like the town was moving ahead without doing our due diligence, without seeking input, and without discussing, you know, our plans and our thoughts regarding improvements with the neighborhoods. And that couldn't have been further from the truth. It really was just a timing issue. I, you know, said that over and over. I conveyed the message both in writing and, you know, over, over the screen to all of them, whether they believed it or not. I, I hope that they do. I think that we are very much looking forward to getting the neighbors' perspectives and that of the larger community. And so I guess that's really what I tried to convey, and our, our greatest desire for that property is the stormwater management plan and then also ADA accessibility. And so really, most of our focus is on, you know, what we can do in the parcel there to try to control the flow of rainwater that, you know, basically goes down the bolt launch area and into, into the water area, and also, you know, creating a bunch of natural, either rain gardens or other types of slopes and swales that are able to, you know, control stormwater in a way that, you know, helps preserve the resource area. And so there'll be a number of hearings and there'll be a number of focus sessions and things similar to what we did with Jero after town meeting and after, hopefully, we have an affirmative vote on the capital plan, so we can engage the engineers for a more precise stormwater management plan.
Yeah, if I could just add to this, I mean, first of all, I want to send another thank you to both Kate and Delia. The White Pond Association, which is different from the White Pond Beach Association, and I think there's a lot of, I'm, I'm, I'm going to put my hand up and offer to do a white, a one pond, one pond, a one-page White Pond fact sheet that has to do with, you know, who owns what, what's under discussion now, and, you know, the, the role of the White Pond Association versus the historic role of the White Pond Beach Association, and now the town's role, which is expanded from having had conservation lands that the town was responsible for, as well as the municipal lands, most of which were backed by the Cove. Now, with the gift from White Pond Beach Association, we have the responsibility, the happy responsibility for a much larger, for what has always been known as the White Pond Beach. And I think that the point that Kate was focusing on was that in the, the first phase of any work on the White Pond Beach will be focused on things that will really, in the end, be most, will most directly relate to the health of the pond, i.e. the stormwater management plan. And, and then later on, and also as part of that, and as the first steps towards the town's recreation use of the, the beach association, making sure that it's accessible for all town residents. And I think both of those are really great opportunities, and I salute Kate's team for moving forward on that carefully. And I also think that there's a lot of passion and understandable passion in this summer, which was hot and dry, and everybody's been quarantined, and there are a lot more people home, in everybody's home, no matter where you live. And White Pond is one of those little spots that shows up when you look for someplace to go. That doesn't mean it shows up with all of the rules and regulations associated with how it should be used. And we are working through the, the impact of that, so. The association's done a lot of great things.
Thank you. Carrie?
Jane, I think that would be extremely helpful if you had time to write up this one-page blurb. I, for one, haven't kept up with all of the details at White Pond and would really like that. And Kate, if you could just go back a second, I didn't really catch what happened. You said there was some misinformation, there was concern that a notice of intent had been filed. So I understand you want to preserve the stormwater quality, you want to preserve the pond quality, and there'll be hearings, some public input, but I just missed what the confusion was about in the first place.
Sure. So what had happened is that we had hired a firm to do a master plan and an initial kind of a feasibility analysis slash master plan. And part of that, we paid to have a survey done, and we, we paid to have the trees tagged, and because we wanted to basically know what we were being gifted effectively. And throughout the course of that and sort of the master planning, we came up with a couple of design schematics about how we could deal with stormwater. When I went on vacation in July, unbeknownst to me, our consultants actually submitted a notice of intent with some of these original drawings attached. They did so because they had done a similar project, abutting a pond in a neighboring community, in the neighboring community of Hudson. And evidently, their experience there, they, Hudson wanted them to file the NOI prior to doing any of the testing and soil borings and everything like that. And so they had done that, and then Hudson's Natural Resource Commission, or whoever oversees their NOI, had kind of put their hearing date out several months. That's not the way that we do it here in Concord, and so unbeknownst to me, that was put in. And I think people felt like that was the town saying that we were ready to move forward with this plan that had been submitted, when in fact, we aren't ready, nor do we, nor have we done all of the studies that we need to do in order to be ready. So I asked that the plan be pulled from that deal without prejudice and basically put out to the longest scheduled meeting that it could be, which right now is the 21st of October. Understandably, that's a pretty tight timeframe, so I'm, I'm pretty sure that we're going to ask them to continue it again. And of course, when we do that, we will have all of the due diligence done. We will have had plenty of public input, some hearings, certainly some forums and other things similar to what we did with the Jero property. Unfortunately, at this point, you know, we're at the mercy of town meeting as well, and so I can't move forward with any of that until after the, the capital plan passes, and we can pay for those studies to be done. But I think it, it sent a message wrongfully to the community that we were moving ahead with some finalized project, and in fact, we are not, so.
Okay, Linda? You're muted.
Thanks, Kate and Jane, for, you know, clarifying some of this discussion. Just another point that I think some citizens have been concerned about in terms of the almost overuse, and certainly the unofficial use, I guess, of Sacum's Cove and some of the interventions that we've tried to put in place to address some of the citizen concerns that were brought to our attention. And I realize that, you know, we're towards the end of the season, there's been incredible stress on people to get out and do things, and not everyone is aware of what, what the prevailing rules and regulations are. So can you just sort of update what has been done in the interim?
Sure. So we, we were able to recall a couple of, or well, one in particular, recreation weekend supervisor. That was a position that we had had basically the fall, winter, and spring. It was an adult who would often go around and sort of, I don't want to say police, because he didn't have any arresting or ticketing authority, but would check in on the different recreation sites, both ones that were programmed and then sort of the informal, unprogrammed ones, particularly surrounding, you know, issues with public restrooms, trash, et cetera. And so we recalled that individual and asked if he would focus his, his efforts both on the Cove and, and recently on checking in at Estabrook. And so that has taken place for the past two weeks. We have the individual on a varying schedule, so that the times that he is stopping in on the weekends varies. So hopefully, people won't learn the schedule and then adjust their plans accordingly. I, I think it's been going relatively well, recognizing that this was not a ranger and the training was, you know, pretty quick. I think that he's been, he's been very zealous, sometimes overzealous, and so we were trying to get the fine line between being too draconian and, and or too lenient. But we're working on that, and we're keeping that person at least through the month of September. And I would imagine that most of the swimming and activity would drop off pretty significantly once we get into October, but we're certainly willing to revisit that if we need to, if, for whatever reason, we have a very warm, you know, fall, beginning of fall season.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Town Manager.
Sure. Kate, thank, thank you for that.
Thank you, everyone.
You know, just to follow up on that point, I mean, I think Kate touched on it, it's just been, there was, there was a lot of things that, that we should have done better, or that were predictable, but there's a lot of this that was unpredictable. You know, in terms of, you know, in normal years, who's staying put for the summer versus who's going away, and, you know, what, what options aren't available to people that normally were, which drove up, you know, use either, as you say, illicit or otherwise of the pond. So that's something we're going to try and be mindful of, especially going forward, separating what really was COVID-19-driven and what was, you know, a normal or relatively normal growth in use. So I did receive an email today that the microenterprise grant funding for businesses that's, that has been given out by the, through the Metropolitan Planning Commission, the application is finally near-ready and should be hopefully out and available to people this week. The contract was stays signed, that took way longer than I think anybody reasonably thought it was going to happen, but at least it is moving forward. And we did have, we did complete early voting. And I, I'm not aware of any issues that we had, so I think early voting did go off fairly well. There was about 500 people who showed up to vote in person. So, and then I think we've received over 5,000 mail-in ballots returned out of 6,400 requested. So I think that, you know, under the heading of, you know, learning new data points in real time, that's a very high, high rate of turnout. Or participation, I guess, it's because they're not really turning, how much we're turning in, I suppose. So I think it's just the, the short of it is, I think the early voting part, I think, went well under the circumstances, and the mail-in ballot thing is a, is really, has, I think, precipitated a, a much higher rate of participation so far. We'll see what we get through the, what we get through the general election, but that's going, that's going very well. So I don't have a lot more than I know. We'll be, we'll be talking about the parking revenue here in a minute, so I can leave it at that. I don't think they have any questions.
I don't have a question, but with respect to liquor licenses, as you recall, we sort of left it to you.
Yes.
And I think you have figured out what you're going to do, so perhaps you could.
Yes, sorry, Mike. Thank you for that. And actually, I did have one more item. So the first thing, on the liquor licenses, Kerry LeFleur and I talked it through, or did vote to leave it in our hands as to whether or not we should do a credit or a rebate. And after talking it through and listening to some of the feedback we've gotten from the business community, and I give credit to Kerry and the Finance Department for being able to show this level of flexibility. The choice was let the business itself decide what they would prefer. There are businesses that maybe are hanging in there and know they're going to renew for 2021, and they want the credit. And then there are businesses who maybe need the money or for whom the rebate would be more beneficial at this time, and so they can request a rebate, and I'll tell you that we've received a mix of both so far. We're collecting their answers, I think, through Friday, and then we'll begin processing the rebates next week. And then the credits will obviously be processed during the normal course of the liquor license renewal. The other thing I didn't want to share, and I, I think this is, this is maybe a little bit self-congratulatory on behalf of, of our departments and our organization, but I did receive a very, very kind note from Dr. Hunter, Superintendent Schools, thanking the town departments for the work that, that, that they have all, that we've all done to try and support the schools in their effort to reopen, and you've all heard me say that that is more complex and challenging than anything that, that else that we've dealt with during the pandemic. And I, you know, certainly, I'm, I'm actually only partially or very little responsible for the great support that our departments have shown the schools, but I do know when I, when I came here and looking at Envision Concord, one of the goals was, you know, really increased collaboration between the town and the schools. And Dr. Hunter's note, and honestly, my reply, thanking her for the great support that the school department has shown the town and its planning for town meeting, and having the drive-in movies at CCHS and a number of other things that don't make it to the, you know, proverbial front page, I think just, it's a demonstration that we really have worked very well together so far. And I know that that spirit of partnership will, will go into the future, because we've really got it working seamlessly. So I want to thank the departments for doing that, and thank Dr. Hunter for the acknowledgement.
Thank you. Well, that was one of the things I was going to say. The next item is on Chair, Chair's remarks, so I'll just echo, that was a nice note from the superintendent, and I think it reflects the kind of cooperation that the town has provided to the schools. She's to be congratulated for all the hard work she's done and her team, both on, in the schools and the school committee. And as much hard work as they've done, their work isn't over when, unfortunately, when school goes back in session, because undoubtedly, there will be something that will come up that will require them to adjust. So we'll keep monitoring this as things unfold. During my remarks, I just have a couple of things I want to say. First, as Stephen mentioned, sort of voting, was don't forget tomorrow is the actual voting day. So if you haven't sent in an absentee ballot, or if you haven't voted early, please go out and vote tomorrow. And the last item on, on my list is, we've been meeting on Mondays at 4:00, but next Monday is a holiday. And so I am proposing that the Select Board will meet on Tuesday, September the 8th, at 4:00. And also, the last reminder is town meeting is coming up on the 13th. Remember, it begins at 1:00. It's on the Doug White Fields. Please come early. And please also go online and review the meeting procedures and health statements that have been made by the town moderator, so that we're as prepared as we can be to have our town meeting be as short as possible while still conducting our business and as safe as it can be. So thank you. That's all I have to say. The next item on our agenda is Ag Committee update. Happy, would you please introduce yourself for the record and bring us up to date?
Happy Concord, Concord Ag Chair, 606 Old Bed, Good Road.
Thank you.
We have started the active participation of several farms in having Ag Week instead of Ag Day, so that there are no concentrated groups in town. So on Tuesday, the 8th, we'll start the day, the week with flower picking at Barrett's Mill. Wednesday will be free picking of pumpkins at Brigham Farm. Thursday will be pumpkin decorating at Shaboni Farm. And Friday will be more flower picking at Barrett's Mill. Saturday will be corn picking at Barrel Farm. So we have activities at these farms, as well as running specials at several other farms. Salt Box will have farmers' lunches, which will be paired with a beer, all of which comes from Salt Box. And Marshall Farm will have pasture-raised natural chicken for sale. Just chosen for this event. Hudson's Farm will run, excuse me, an audiovisual thing, which might be entitled "A Day in the Life at Hudson's Farm", but it'll be a live feed of what's going on at the farm all of those days. And also, there will be a 100th customer prize every day at that farm. We will also have an online Instagram raffle contest, which a customer can take a selfie and post it to our website or Instagram account, and at the end, we'll have a raffle for a winner. So we are busy now with getting the press releases done and the advertising, which leads us to, we would like to ask if we could have something like $250 for advertising.
Thank you, Happy. Before I turn to Jane, a couple to just clarify, you mentioned Salt Box Lunch. Are they going to distribute the lunches at the restaurant in West Concord or the farm?
They're going to have, they now evidently have their stand in West Concord, in the kitchen, and it will be order online and pick up at the kitchen.
Right. And so my second point, is there a handout or a flyer that describes all of the activities that you?
That's, that's what we're working on.
And you'll get it to the town, so we can post it on the website whenever.
Hopefully tomorrow.
Thank you very much, Happy. Jane? You're muted.
Sorry. I wanted to ask Happy, when you talk about the Instagram account that these things will be posted to, do you want to give everybody that address?
It's Concord, Farms of Concord.
Farms of?
Yes. Otherwise, they can send them directly to Melissa at Barrett's Mill Farm.
Okay.
Great. Great.
Great.
Thank you, Jane. Thank you, Happy. Well, that's, that's great. I'm glad we're going to be celebrating agriculture in Concord one way this year anyway, and I'm sure we'll all look forward to visiting the farms and participating in some of these activities. So thank you, Abby and Happy and your committee, and we'll look forward to seeing you around Ag Week.
Okay.
The next item on our agenda is Committee Liaison Assignments, and for this agenda item, I'll turn the meeting over to the clerk. Linda?
Okay. I've attended two different meetings for the Affordable Housing Trust Study Committee, one which was as recent as this afternoon. They took positions on several articles.
Linda, the, the topic is the Committee Liaison Assignments, not Liaison Reports.
Sorry, my apologies. You can see where my mind was, having just come from another meeting. All right. In your packets were a copy of the FY20 Liaison Assignments. And typically, as we approach the, the new year, which is obviously off-schedule this year because of the late town meeting, we quickly review the assignments and also new members necessitate, and changing membership necessitates some changes in the committees. What I'd like to suggest, I'd like to get some comments, some brief comments today from all of you. But I also would like to suggest that each of you, including the Select, Select Board-elect member, who's been so patient, submit to me their top four choices from their existing list, because obviously, we're going to have to shift some of the, the committee assignments. And I also want to, before we, you comment on a couple of items here, I just want to point out that the list that was in your packet had not been updated with the following three committees. Under my list was the Affordable Housing Trust Study Committee, had been added during the year. Under Terry Ackerman's list, the Capital Planning Task Force had been added during the year. Under Susan Bates's list, the Economic Vitality Committee had been added. And there may be one committee on your list, Jane, that no longer exists. Is that, I'm not sure, the Youth Coordinator Advisory Board?
Yeah, that has never, never met.
Okay, yeah.
And, and I would also add the Traffic Committee. If, if you just said it, I missed it. Sorry.
No, I didn't say it, so thank you, yeah.
And on my list, the Junction Village Open Space Committee.
And actually.
That is there, so.
It's the Transportation Committee, not the Traffic Committee.
Right.
Which is, we just recently, yeah, okay, and it is not populated yet, but thank you for adding that. So I guess a couple of questions, I, well, we're all aware that some of the committee assignments, the timeframe in which conflicted with each other for any couple of committees we may have had on our, on our own list. So I'd like you to also point that out, although it's going to be difficult to anticipate that, given the changing schedules that committees have been using under the COVID situation here. But if you, if you have some known conflicts, that, that would be important to also send along with your four top choices. Obviously, I think we've tried to have at least one regulatory or border commission spread between each of the committee members as liaison, and I think that, that is helpful to the extent that we can accomplish that. We did receive some correspondence today regarding some committees, because of conflicts, perhaps we have, some of us have not been able to attend consistently. And so one committee was pointed out, the, that perhaps a representative could be appointed by the Select Board if needed, as opposed to a liaison, if that particular committee allows for that to happen. So, and then there's one other thing that came to my attention, which is there are three different cultural council or committee that are listed, I guess, on your list, Terry. And there's some confusion about the difference between those committees and if all three need to be covered. So if I could hear a little conversation about that and then other. So, if I could hear a little conversation about that, and then other items that are on your mind as select board or select board-elect members. Terry?
Address the cultural committees?
Yes.
Okay.
Just real quickly, just differentiate the three, and if all three are still necessary to be.
Right. Okay. The Concord Local Cultural Council only meets a short time in the fall to basically give out grants. And so, the liaison assignment is only, it's a seasonal thing. It doesn't, it's a very short time commitment. And then the other two, the West District, West Concord Junction District Cultural Council and the Concord Center Cultural District are each pretty active. And it is good to have a select board liaison attend those meetings. They're really well with the economic vitality.
Okay, thank you. So, are there any other comments or suggestions that we should be, Susan?
Yeah, I'm the person, one of the people, I don't know if there's more than just me, that has two committees that meet at the same time. And one, one of them has been very active this year and is a town committee. The other is a regional committee. And I, I've not made it to the regional committee meetings very often because of the other committee is so active, and I felt like I needed to be there as much as possible. So, I'll put that in my notes.
That'd be great. Thank you. Jane?
I was going to offer that one of the committees that I enjoy immensely when I get to it, but I often don't because I work during the day as well, is the Magic Committee. And that's sort of, thinking about that committee, which is a regional committee, and offers a lot of important ideas, potential grants that we could be, I mean, there are lots of really good reasons for Concord to have a select board member who can be present often. I would also suggest that some of the committees, like the region, you know, the regional committees in particular, I think sometimes it's really good to have consistency and have somebody who's going to be on the select board for a while. So, in my last year, I would suggest, you know, somebody coming on early in their tenure on the select board might be able to carry it through longer. I've had the privilege of being a Magic Representative for a number of years. And during the years I had more time, it was great. When my schedule gets crammed, I, you know, day meetings sometimes are really difficult. I also, like Susan, have had a couple of committees that have consistently met at the same time. Now, ironically, in COVID, that means if I've got two computers up, sometimes I can have both on the screen, but I can't say dividing me gives anybody any benefits. Maybe I don't give anybody any benefits to start with, but it's one way to divide yourself, so.
Thanks. So, if, yeah, Matt?
So, I'm the newbie here, so I just got this list and found it kind of mesmerizing, the range of committees and boards that each member covers. And it, it didn't seem to kind of have any structure to it. And so, I was a little bit confused about that. And I went through and just tried to figure out the kind of domains that these boards and committees and other organizations cover, and whether there were clusters of them that would make logical groupings that would have the same levels of effort for each board member. And I, I came up with, you know, just a rough idea of, and this was something that I just sent out, but, you know, where you have the traditional ones for the chair, you know, education and financial. But then, you know, to go for like land use is a whole group with the, and then cultural and recreational, and then environmental, human services, operations, and regional. And that, the benefits of this, you know, besides, you know, trying to get a reasonable range of numbers of committees assigned and a level of effort for each, and this, you know, very subjective, but I just came up with the rough groupings, would be to get each of the members kind of, you know, mastering a domain. And that they would circulate year over year, but that, you know, you would have somebody who would kind of know what was going on if it came to cultural affairs in the town, and, and would be able to help with cross-pollinating ideas across those boards and committees. And right now, if you have a set of kind of disparate assignments, it's just very unlikely, you know, that the Ag Committee and the Concord Housing, you know, groups are, you know, going to have much to say to one another. I mean, occasionally, there might be a topic, but it would just only be by chance. And so, I just wondered if that might be an approach to consider. Again, I don't want to, you know, be the guy coming in, like, you know, first day and saying, hey, let's change everything we're doing, but.
Sure you do.
So, I just wanted to offer that, and I have the spreadsheet available, and it didn't have the three changes. I just took the as-is lists. But, you know, little changes here and there, and of course, maybe doing an additional filter in terms of the day and time, you know, because there's some things that you could say, okay, is the NRC, is that land use or is that environmental? Well, it's some of both. It's, you know, is the CPC, is that financial or is it recreational and cultural? You know, and so, there are ways that you could re-categorize these. And it's not about like, okay, where any individual committee or board fits in, but rather the concept of, do we want to have domains?
Yeah. Well, thank you. I look forward to looking at that. Terry?
Yes, Matt, can you send that around? Because that looks very interesting. I'd like to look through that.
I sent it to Jeremy with Cockpit Stephen earlier today.
Take a look at that. And it reminded me of a few, your, all of your comments reminded me of a few other comments. If anybody has a committee that they're on now, that they want to give up for whatever reason, I think that would be worth knowing. Like, there are some committees that I might be interested in putting on my list as a choice, but not, like, for example, just for example, Susan has Economic Vitality, or Jane has Transportation. And I'm assuming they want to continue, but maybe I'm wrong about that. So, I think it would be worth knowing if people want to switch. And just two other brief comments. A schedule thing that I thought of is, the Council on Aging is one of mine this year. And they meet at 4:00 PM on Mondays by noon now. So, that is going to be a problem, no matter who has it. And finally, I don't think this counts, Linda, as a liaison, but I want to check in, because I am a member of the MMA Fiscal Policy Committee, and I would like to keep doing that. So, it's not exactly the same as being a liaison, and I don't know how that fits into the scheme.
And that was another thing that surprised me, I think, was the idea that you would keep on the same committee year after year. I mean, I guess that it's good because you provide continuity and depth, but the committee members themselves do, I would think, at least coming in as a new select board member. I really appreciate the opportunity, again, to have kind of these domains, and then cycle through them through the course of the, you know, being a member of the board. And that by the time I was done, I would have this, you know, okay, I got it all. I figured it out. Well, maybe not, but at least get some progress on that front.
I think Jane had her hand up. Jane?
Yeah, I just wanted to give some of the historical context that I, I was given when I came on the select board. And Mike, this may ring true for you. Some of, some of the way, there is a randomness, definitely, to the way the liaisons have, have been assigned over time. There's also an acknowledgement of the amount of time allocated to certain boards and committees and others, time around town meeting. You know, there's, there's sort of a balancing of, of actual individual time that needs to be put towards something. There's also, and I will say this as somebody who was on a number, has been on a number of boards and committees for things that I really was not, that would never have been on an interest list, and yet, they have been fascinating and really, really important ways of learning about Concord and meeting people in Concord, even in these virtual times, that I feel have made me a better select board member. So, and have given me insights into other issues that come up before the select board. So, there's something to be said for having a bit of a spread in your list. That being said, I mean, we also, one of the things that I think we've tried, sometimes there's been, you know, more than one member with an expertise or an area of interest. But some of it is also aligning exactly those two things along committee lines, knowing where you can be more helpful than other places. So, there's just, you know, that's been one of my, you know, one of the experiences I've had on the select board.
So, I'll, yeah, Mike?
I would just add another dimension to that. And it changes, of course, from year to year as new people come on the board. Number of people on the board work, and there are a lot of meetings that are in the daytime. I remember I had just retired when I came on from my position at Boston University and came on and was able to take on a bunch of committees that met during the daytime, because other people at that time were working and found it very difficult. I think a couple of them were going into Boston every day and the like. So, I think it's, you know, the idea that Matt's expressing is a good one, but there are, you know, but there are complicating factors that we have to take into account when we make these assignments.
So, thank you. That's all valuable input. Again, notwithstanding your proposal, Matt, I'm still going to ask you to identify the four that you'd like to stay with. I've heard all of the comments. I'm going to try to integrate them. I certainly was an example of coming close to a cluster of committees this year that all related to land management or housing. And, and there was some benefit into that, but I also had other committees that greatly departed from that. So, I, I think we'll, I'll do my best to blend all of this input and come back to you with the list and get your input, further input on it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Linda, and good luck. The next, the next item on our agenda is the Correspondence Policy. And again, I will turn this agenda item over to Linda.
So, I asked that this item be placed on today's agenda as we heard growing for policy discussion on the part of the board before we went any further, because we obviously have not been consistent with how we're posting these. No fault really of our own, because we hadn't yet clarified all of this, and it's sort of just transpired as we were going forward. But all, but I thought that was essential. And the other piece is that there has obviously been continuing citizen interest in the availability of seeing the correspondence. So, again, I understand thanks are to our select board-elect member for drafting a policy, which was included in our packet today. And so, I'd like to open it up for discussion and reactions, not only to the actual policy draft, but just the general place we find ourselves with this whole correspondence issue in general. Susan?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to comment. Thank you, Matt, for putting this draft together, and it's very well organized. But I was wondering, because it says town boards and all town boards and committees, what the, what the status is now of the correspondence, not just how they deal with it, but how, what's the volume that different boards and committees are getting? And I was wondering if we might survey them to find out, you know, because this does need to be consistent. But I'm wondering, I'm assuming, I don't know, I don't think it's fair to assume anything. I don't know if the select board gets more correspondence than other, other boards and committees, and I'm sure that's topic dependent, but it'd be nice to know what they currently do, you know, how it's handled, so that we have some sense of this starting point, where we're starting from, all of us, before, so we can. I think that's important foundation information to have before we get too specific.
Terry?
Yes, I agree. And thank, thank you for taking the lead, Matt, on this. We definitely need a consistent policy. But I had, I'd like this draft better than another one that I saw earlier, because I'm thinking through some of the details. Like, as Susan said, in one place it says "select board", and then in another place it says "all town boards". So, we have to decide that. And then another detail is, it says 24 hours. If the correspondence comes in within 24 hours of the meeting, it might not make it. I'm wondering if 48 hours, our practice right now is that we post the agenda 40, with the materials, 48 hours in advance. So, I'm thinking through the staff time, and maybe Stephen wants to comment. I don't want us to get in a situation where we are making a huge task for staff, or that the town obligates itself. The human error that someone might forget to post something is definitely out there, and I don't want any kind of, you know, ramification that we purposely posted this one, and we didn't post that one, and all of that kind of stuff. So, I think we have to really think it through carefully and get these details right. And finally, how long these letters would stay on the website? And this might be something Stephen knows. Do we have an infinite amount of capacity in the cloud that we can just keep years and years and years of them up, or how do they come down? So, we don't have any favoritism and we're transparent, you know, so we should be consistent, and we should get this right, so.
Okay, thank you. Jane?
Shockingly, that in, in this house, the first thing that came to my mind is that the school committee and the select board are probably the two most, my guess, would be the most robust sources of input. And I don't know personally whether the, the role and the definition of the responsibilities of the school committee. I mean, I think there's a legal question involved in some of this, in terms of whether there are difference, different regulations involved in citizen input and response and how it's treated. I mean, I'm personally always in favor of transparency. I, you know, I think that Terry brought up a very good point in terms of over, overuse of town staff time. And we also have to remember that not all the boards and committees are staffed. In fact, quite a few of them aren't, and not all the boards and committees are, have membership that is, you know, spends very much time on the computer. So, I mean, we, we have to come up with, if we're going to have a consistent plan, we have to make it something that doesn't, one of, anybody that's been on the select board with me knows, I'm always saying, we want to encourage a greater and wider participation in all our boards and committees. I don't want to make this a, you know, an issue. Not that it alone would be, but, you know, let's just think about the responsibilities for committee members and how we, how we burden that.
Thank you. Yeah, one of the things I failed Thank you. Oh, what, yeah, one of the things I failed to say when I was framing this is that in addition to consistency and policy, wherever we end up on that, I was also concerned about staff management. And, and quite frankly, our own ability to respond when, when correspondence is coming in constantly, being updated all day long up to the meeting. And in, and, and I had meetings before this, and I'm sure some of the rest of you may have as well. It's just, you know, not fair to all of the things we're trying to cope with, as well as to the citizens who are expecting to see their correspondence posted by a certain date. So backing up away from the, the meeting, as has already been suggested, might be something that seriously needs to be looked at. Jeremy does an incredible job and has, as he's tried to keep up with the flow that's coming in. But it's, you know, there are many other things on his plate as well. So we need to balance all of that. Jeremy, did you want to add anything at this time about that or?
Sure. So, yeah, I just have a couple of comments. I think it would be good, as Jane noted, most, I don't know about most, but a chunk of the boards and committees don't have staff people. So maybe just making this the select board policy would be my first input. And then my second one, just in terms of timing. I think for me, on my, just on the posting end, having 24 hours in advance, just to have that be the close for the time that we need to receive the correspondence. Because then it gives, not only me not time to post it, but it gives everybody, the select board members and any residents, time to review the packet that will have correspondence. So I think 24 hours is perfectly appropriate. Especially because we post the agenda right now on Thursday nights and then and the meetings are Mondays. So in order to be able to actually know what's on the agenda, to be able to comment, a lot of people need to see the agenda first. So you know, as long as really by the time I get to my computer on Monday morning, I can just add in the correspondence. I think that's perfectly appropriate.
Can I, can I ask about that? So this, this?
I just called on Mike, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to provide a little bit of background. Historically, we would try to respond to correspondence. Most of the correspondence the select board would get would be in writing. We didn't really get a lot of email correspondence. We, if we had a particular issue that was before the board, what we would do would, we would be collect all of the correspondence we would receive. And we would make it available in the townhouse. So that if anybody wanted to read it, they could come in. We got kind of in this situation we're in now when we were in Zoom mode. And we had the Esterbrook issue where we got a whole lot of correspondence. And because it was an important issue, I decided that we should post all of this correspondence so that folks would understand what was going on. And then, you know, and, and because people couldn't come into the townhouse without, you know, putting, making it a little more difficult health law. So we got to this by that particular method. And then since that issue, we've haphazardly, well, we've tried to keep current on correspondence that comes in, but I'll confess that we, we weren't as careful about that as we could. It's correspondence, somebody writes and says, there's a typo on page three of some document. Is that, is that correspondence? Or is correspondence really when somebody is addressing a substantive issue coming before the town or a concern? So I think once we got into Zoom mode, our current, our standard practice, which was to respond, thanking people for writing and not to make them available unless there was a particular issue before the board, kind of got away from us. We're under no obligation to post or otherwise make any of those correspondence available. So it's only been in the interest of transparency either before the Zoom meetings or during them, that we've tried to keep people informed because they just don't have as much access physically to the select board or remote. So, thank you.
Thank you. Terry, I think you had, yep.
Oh, sorry. I was just responding to what Jeremy was saying. I think I heard you say, Jeremy, that you would be able to post things on Monday morning. And I'm very concerned about that because that's within the 24 hours. You know, I just don't want to get in a situation where we commit to, I'm of the philosophy of, you know, under, under promise and over produce. I forget the exact expression. I don't want us to commit that we're always going to post everything within 24 hours. And then it's posted Monday morning and someone complains, well, that's less than 24 hours and the, and the whole policy backfires. The people feel we played favorites or they, their thing was omitted or posted late or I just feel like it's going to be such a burden on Jeremy to get it so, so correct. And the, the volume that's coming in is really high. And I'm very concerned about that.
Okay. I, I think I've heard from everybody on the select board at this point. Amanda, further comment?
I just wanted to give a little background, having, you know, gone now through, there's a second draft of this policy. I'm not sure if others have, have necessarily been able to see it. But, and I can just share on my screen, the current second draft of this. So what I've done since writing the first draft is I've gotten feedback from the Commonwealth Division of Open Government who did highlight, you know, that this is a completely discretionary thing, right? That from an open government standpoint, we're not under any requirement to distribute this information. That said, you know, they are public records. You know, if someone sends a document to any of our town boards and committees in, in their professional capacity, it, it is a public record. And so we really do need to think about this policy as kind of a best effort kind of activity. And yet also be aware that, yeah, we want it to be fair and open and clear and all of those things. And so that, that's one of the things in this new draft is I've tried to highlight that, that aspect. And then the second thing, and I think I, I share the concerns that about Jeremy's comment of just saying, hey, on Monday, I'll just collect this stuff and, and put, put it out. Is that, you know, we have to realize that there are cases in which the, this correspondence could include problematic information and it would actually need to be filtered. And, and that's for the protection of everyone. And so I have tried to document those kinds of exceptions. Again, making note that even under those exception circumstances. Sorry? Under the exception circumstances, they're still public records. And so, you know, if there's, you know, personally identifiable information that's contained there of other individuals, if there are, you know, threats or defamatory statements on all of that kind of content, you know, we, we need to not be publishing that information proactively. And so that's why I, I suggested the 24 hour period prior to the distribution of the packet. And, you know, that said, you know, that's still on a kind of a best effort basis. The, the other thing about the, and I'm still waiting to hear back from the public records division because they may have additional comments just related to, you know, how this fits in to public records policies. So the other part is the scope. And I think this was really good feedback about, you know, which boards or committees, I should say that, you know, on the planning board, we do get quite a volume of correspondence, perhaps not as much as on the select board, but quite a bit. And so, you know, we want to, we, we have been increasing the degree to which we publish. And typically, we do not really have a meeting packet in the same sense we, is here. There, there is, you know, our town planners report this distributed. But we would typically post the letters on the website. And so there would be a sort of current documents section of the website and you would see the letters there. And then there was a great comment about when should those go away? And indeed, you know, when the current documents are not current anymore, they're not typically visible. The, I have also received questions from the public about, well, hey, you know, there's not enough time if there's just a topic that's just been posted under the agenda to write up about it and then get that topic on in the meeting. And all I can say there is we have to balance the, you know, the safety and, and the, the, also just respect of our town staff and the timeliness, the ability to turn this around with the, the speed at which we can respond. And so I think that the public comment period is still there. People can make public comments. I also think that we should acknowledge that we've received correspondence. But I think the burden on us to publish, you know, in that amount of time, if, if it was an unanticipated topic is, is difficult. And, and so that's why I've not enshrined that into this proposed policy.
Thank you. Can you, yeah, okay. Thank you, Matt. Susan?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that it might be worthwhile, and Stephen might know more about this. Being in touch with Kari, the town clerk, about the longevity of how long things remain on the website and what that, because there, there are probably some protocols that the town adheres to already in terms of that, and we may not need to reinvent that.
So I think I want to, sorry, Linda, okay? Because there's, there's a lot of operational considerations that have been kind of bandied about back and forth. And I wanted to provide some clarification and kind of my perspective on it, based on my experience of what types of correspondence boards and committees receive. I mean, the, what I've seen so far in Concord is completely consistent with other communities in terms of how, when, and how much people, you know, submit their views to boards, boards and committees. So I do think, I agree with Matt, the select board does, the select board and school committee are kind of, you know, have the highest level of, of authority, if you will. But the regulatory boards and committees do get a lot of correspondence when there's something that's particularly controversial of community interest. So, you know, on a normal A and R plan, they're not going to hear from anybody, but on a, on a subdivision or a PRD, they're going to hear from a lot of people. And so I think what, what I thought the intent of this was, was to take people who submit, you know, through either electronic or paper means their views on a particular, and that's either was, is, or going to be on an agenda. And I was looking at it as to be incorporated with the record, meaning the minutes of the meeting that the issue was discussed or, and so making it a part of that record. I guess I didn't view this as a, a means to get correspondence into a packet for the board to consider as a part of their packet, because you're all receiving the correspondence anyway. And making your decisions based on when you read that correspondence directly from either the resident or maybe it's distributed. So I thought this was more of connecting the correspondence received with the record, the official record of the, of the item. And so the other part of this is not all correspondence is the same. And that's one of the reasons why I think the draft policy starts, I think, a good, a good process of defining what types of correspondence we're talking about. Because I think we get all different kinds of feedback from the community. Some of it is, we're doing a good job. Some of it is, we're doing a bad job. Some of it is on this particular thing, I think the policy or the bylaw or your approach should be modified to do this and here's why. And it's that last category that, that, that's kind of, you know, feedback of a, a public policy, not of, you know, disagreements or personalities that I think is what, what I guess I inferred that we were talking about here. So if we get people who write about, you know, a buy, a proposed bylaw change that we're doing, and they say, we are in favor of this because of this, or we're against it because of this, that correspondence can come in. And as long as it's not attacking people or revealing personal information or something else, it is a public record anyway. That can be taken in and folded in with the permanent record. And I think the policy does kind of, does kind of cover that. So, you know, I guess that for my feet, from a purpose of my feedback, and in terms of staff time, I mean, we, a lot of staff is especially here where people are really engaged and they know who the, the people who work in the departments are that support the, the primary boards and committees. They're getting, they're getting copied on a lot of it anyway. And so I don't know that it's a new additional burden. I do think there is some additional burden, but I don't know that it's overwhelming. It just, it just depends on the moment. And that's where I think having flexibility on deadlines is important because not all correspondence is going to be the same. And the volume of correspondence isn't going to be the same either. And since this is something that we're going to be doing, that's, I don't know if it's unprecedented, but I don't know of any other community that has a formalized policy on making citizen correspondence a part of like the, that border committee's official record. I think it's, I do think it, it does help keep people who are paying attention and want to be engaged. It gives them a way to be, to be a part of the discussion and a part of the record. But I do think there are some limitations just for the purposes of, like you said, it, operational ease and reduction of potential mistakes. But I, I think we're on, I think we're, I think this is a great start and I, and I do kind of visualize it with some refining, we could probably do this.
Thank you. Jane, did you have your hand up or? No? Okay. Matt, one last quick comment?
Yeah, sure. I just wanted to say that I did talk to the Mass Municipal Association and they said that they were not aware of any town or city that had such a policy in place. They said that didn't mean that there wasn't one, but they, they weren't aware of it. The other thing I'd say is that because this is kind of an advisory policy and that we are already, in some cases, publishing letters, we have to consider that we're already, we already have a policy. It's just an unwritten policy. And that we can be iterative about refining this. And so I think that, you know, it's kind of low risk, but that, you know, we should try to, to kind of formalize what we are doing. I think it's helpful.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments from the select board itself? All right. I'm going to suggest, clearly we'll revisit this conversation sooner rather than later, I hope. I'm going to suggest that, I guess, Matt, you as select board elect member, if you're willing to take another look at the draft that you proposed based on some of the comments we've heard. And then keep, make that available, send that to Jeremy so that it'll be made available to the rest of us. That would be great. Thank you for the work on that. And please, and I'm also going to suggest that we select initially direct this toward the select board policy as opposed to other committees at this time. All right. Any other suggestions for how to proceed? If not, I, yep, Jane?
Hang on, let me make sure I'm not. I have a feeling I'm not needed. I never know. Just that the one thing that seems to be left out is the response policy. Because one of the things we often also do is publish amongst each other responses, or sometimes the responses get published alongside the letters. So that's just a nuance that we need to, to add to the policy.
Yes, and I, I think some of the, under the scope section in terms of where standards were set, if I'm remembering the correct section. I, I think getting some definition there was a step in the direction of what you're asking for. But yes, there's maybe more nuances there to be looked at.
Is it, is it, does it benefit the discussion to have a goals section at the beginning? Like, I, I think if we articulate what the goal of the policy is, I think it may, it may clarify a lot that would follow it.
I was hoping Purpose was doing that, but maybe I missed it.
Well, no, I, I, I think it does. I, I think it does, but I,
Yep. And I also
Maybe it's what, what are we, what are we trying to accomplish broadly? You know what I mean?
Yeah. Okay, thank you. And I, I also think there needs to be more flexibility built in in terms of other legal reasons that correspondence may be withheld from distribution in that section.
Yeah, but I was hoping that the first sentence that says, you know, to enhance citizen participation in town government and Yeah, but I was hoping that the first sentence that says, you know, to enhance citizen participation in town government and sharpen the debate on current issues, that is the goal.
All right, thanks, Matt, for tackling round two of the draft, or three, I should say, whatever it is that you're working on. And we'll get back to this. Hopefully soon. Okay.
Right. Thank you, Linda, and thank you all for the work on that matter. The next item on our agenda is parking meter enforcement through the remainder of the year. As I recall, we were expecting or the chief was working on some kind of a draft. Stephen.
Yes, thanks. So I do have, unfortunately, Chief O'Connor had a prior engagement tonight. So I do, but I do have some information from him. In fact, I may. I may share my screen. If you'll permit me.
Please.
Where is the? Document? Sorry. So when I do the screen sharing, it's such, there we go, wasn't showing me the document that I wanted to share. So can folks see this? This is a spreadsheet. And it, the the print is really small, but this is basically. A five-year analysis going back to FY16 of the expenditures, revenues and fund balances. So the this top one is the expenditures. And just to. Just for for really just, I won't go into the details of it, but, you know, and we do spend about. You know, three to $400,000 a year out of this account for a variety of things that are associated with supporting the parking program. Not the least of which is line markings, you know, painting the parking spaces and the turn, turn, turn arrows and those types of things. We support the funding of a meter officer who is responsible for the enforcement side of our parking program. And then also we have a contract with a vendor who is responsible for the maintenance side of our parking program. As you know, our meters are actually fairly sophisticated, you know, pieces of equipment with. 2G and now many of them have been upgraded to 4G network capacity. And so that's an ongoing contract that we're paying, you know, I think a pretty significant amount, I think it's could be $10,000 a month. And so we, because the meters do need maintenance, even though they're not being actively used, they still are, they're computers, and so they do need active maintenance. And then, of course, we retain a fund balance to ensure. You know, the ability to handle either dramatics, you know, dramatic reductions in revenue or other unforeseen circumstances, which this year it's obviously a reduction in revenue. And you can see it's, that's these lines, it's gone down significantly as a result of the impacts of not charging for parking. So and there's just a few things, you can see the fund balance going down. Over the past fiscal years into FY21. So we are running a, you know, the surplus is now, we're now running into a deficit this year. And then the expenditures are going down somewhat, but not, but obviously not as much as revenues are going down. So. Let me just say, as a threshold matter, I think. Not charging for parking or suspending meter enforcement was absolutely the right decision to support the local business community. And I think that the board's inclination to continue that through the holiday season is is right. I just wanted to let the board know that there is a cost associated with that. I mean, we, we won't, we won't fill the meter officer position that that position is currently vacant. We're not going to fill it, obviously, because we won't have the revenue. And then there were certain things that need to be done, like the the maintenance, the meter contract and the pavement markings. As to examples of things that. Will need to be borne now by the general fund. So and it's not, it's not an insignificant amount of money. We're talking, you know, hundred, hundred thousand or more. So I just, just not to try and dissuade anybody, I do think it's the right choice to go through the holiday season anyway. But I just wanted to report that there is, like I said, it it does cost the town something to do that. But I think it's a more than reasonable investment to keep the the business districts going, because the only parking meters we have are in the local business districts. So I just wanted to put that out there for information. So Terry, I don't know if you.
Oh, yeah, thank you for that. It was a little bit difficult. Oh, Mike, are you trying to speak? You're muted.
I am trying to just, I have clarification, sorry, and I come here from Stephen. Is this Chief O'Connor's work or Carrie LaFleur's work?
Yes, so the finance department did an analysis, but did the spreadsheet. But the, a lot of the policy work in terms of managing, managing the, obviously supervising the meter officer, managing the the vendor contract. Coordinating the line marking program with CPW, that's all the police department, I mean.
Please extend our thanks to the finance department and the chief and yourself for getting this done for us. Appreciate it. Terry, you got a question?
Right, it looks like a good analysis. If you could, please send that around to us. It was a little hard to see on the screen.
Sure.
And I agree completely that. To extend. The not charging all the way through to the holiday season. I'm wondering how long our contract is with this meter company.
I don't know, Carrie, if you know, I I do believe it's a multi-year deal. And obviously, and it started, it started last fall, and like I said, part of it was upgrading some of the meters, because we had, we're having a lot of problems with our meters, as you all know. When I first got here, there were a lot of complaints about our parking system. By doing this contract, we really ameliorated many of those problems, except the big one, which is cellular service in downtown. But we did, you know, they were more active in doing maintenance and making sure that the batteries remained fresh. The solar powered batteries, marine fresco meter, so we were getting really a good value to that contract while we had an active parking system.
Well, I'm just looking ahead a little bit. It's not something we have to decide now, but seems to me that, I, as I said, I couldn't totally see the whole spreadsheet. But many of the expenses are for paying for the meter contract and paying for the meter person. And so. I don't know, I I'd like to see the board think out of the box in the next few years.
So if you're, if you're heading towards free parking forever, I will. That's not, it's parking, we do generate revenue for parking, and the revenue supports the parking system. But the parking system is really designed to create turnover in the parking spaces. So people don't park curbside in front of a business to stay there all day, and that's something that has long been policy in Concord. So we'll see what happens as long as the pandemic continues. But I would recommend strongly against saying we're just not going to have paid parking.
We dealt with that with citizen positions for a couple of years at town meeting. All right, well, what's the select board's plan? I guess the question I have, Stephen, is I understand the cost associated with doing this, and that if we suspended parking for the rest of the year. The calendar year would impose a burden on the town. Is that something the town can afford to? Support?
Yes, I mean, I, and and I guess saying Carrie is here and she can weigh in, but I I think it, like I said, it's not. It's, and I guess part of this is, you know, we've been trying to find ways to support local businesses, and it's important to note that. Not charging for parking is is specifically designed to support local businesses, and there is a significant cost to the town to do that. But again, I think it's money well spent, and we've gotten great feedback on it, because. You know, Terry, to the point I made earlier about parking systems, and this isn't in Concord, parking systems everywhere are designed to create turnover. So businesses can have, you know, influx of of new customers throughout the day. But the volume of customers has gone down so far that. That need isn't really there during the pandemic, and so what we're doing now makes complete sense for for where we're at. I do think the town. You know, the town could, you know, could, could absorb the costs on the general fund that are needed. Like I said, there's, there are costs that we're obligated to to pay no matter what, and then there's stuff that we can suspend because the parking system isn't active. But I do think we will be able to do that. Hopefully, if the legislature comes up with a revenue loss relief bill, this is certainly something that we would submit for a revenue loss relief.
Making much progress, or is it?
Nope, they're not, but I think that's more a sense of, I think that's because they're not in session right now. I think they're on, I don't know if they adjourn for the for the year or if they're just on break, but I think it's a reflection of. A break at the legislative level and maybe at the federal level as well. But I do think, I do think we're going to see a revenue relief bill, a lost revenue relief bill, because a lot of communities are feeling now as fiscal year, new fiscal year start, that that is a thing. So my my sense is, yes, I don't, I don't know if Carrie would disagree, but I I think in all the conversations we've had about managing the finances. Through the pandemic, I think we try to be strategic, you know, when we updated the budget, we did, we didn't, we didn't go to the levy limit, to the levy amount that we did in the original budget. And as a, it's a bad way to say it, but we left quote unquote money on the table or taxing capacity on the table. I don't think we would need to use that for this, but at least it's there.
All right, Carrie, do you want to weigh in on this?
I'm just showing my face as a sign of support here. I I don't really have anything other to add than than what Stephen said. This, it's certainly something that we can figure out how to manage, whatever you decide to do.
Thank you. All right, folks, and what do we want to do? Do we want to postpone, make a decision on this, or are we ready to act, or are we on this? Who wants to speak? I'm ready to act, so I spoke.
Susan?
I'm ready. I am ready as well.
Was that you're ready too? I didn't quite hear you.
I'm ready as well.
So is the, is our position here that we would like to support extending the lack of enforcement of parking meters to the end of the calendar year? Is that?
Yes, yes.
I see your heads going up and down, so.
Sorry, Mike. Yeah, just, I I I don't, I'm not 100% certain of this, but I would have to guess that the holiday shopping season probably extends a little bit into January. And so instead of making December 31st the cutoff, maybe go, I don't have a calendar in front of me that has the first week of January, but maybe. You know, the following Monday.
We haven't done that in the past, when we've extended the holiday, it's been through, I forget when it began, whether it began near Thanksgiving or right after December. I I don't care, but.
I, whatever past practices is fine, I just.
Past practice, if we're still in this mess when it comes to the beginning of 2021, why is it like the board have the ability to revisit this matter?
I agree.
All right, Madam Clerk, do you? I see you're looking at a pad, so you must have been working feverishly on a motion.
Yeah, right. All right, move to extend the non-enforcement of parking meters, meters through the remainder of the year, calendar year.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Lawson.
Hi.
Ms. Ackerman.
Hi.
Ms. Bates.
Hi.
Ms. Hotchkiss.
Hi.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, I.
Thank you, I know it passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is reconsideration of the 2020 annual town meeting warrant article, approval of the tax incentive financing agreement. So as you, as you know, reaching out to Mr. Ohanian. After the select board votes, the finance committee votes and input from citizens, asking him to review his. Financial positions and see if there could be any accommodation. He came back that we could further reduce the cap on the tip from 2.65 million to $2 million. And they, for just so we're clear on that, that we, what the consequence of that is. Well, let me say first, well, I'll say that the consequence of that is that. Spreading that $2 million over the 15-year period of the TIF reduces. The annual sort of cap, if you will, from 100, from 4, excuse me, from 133,333 dollars. From the original 148, $200. And the consequence further of that is then that the amount that would be paid in taxes. Would go up by an additional $14,866. And it reduces a percentage reduction in the tip from 77% to 69.21. So before I ask for comments from anybody, I want to say, though, remember, these numbers, while they are mathematically correct. The actual amount that is paid is going to be based on the actual evaluation of the project when it is completed and able to be valued. So this is the best estimate we have, these numbers that I gave you and double checked by the town assessor. So that's, that's that. I want to first, before we get into discussions, though, there are two, what I would guess are typos in the TIF that's before you tonight. They're not consequential, but in two places, it talks about an amount of money, and it lists the money as 19,998,525 millions. And it should, instead of saying millions, simply say dollars. So I will get both of those two matters corrected. And then, at the suggestion of a member of the select board, and because there has been different interpretations of the existing MOA between the town. And Grantham Group, and that is whether or not this TIF represented an additional financial contribution. So to sort of clarify that going forward. With the help of Ms. Ackerman, I developed a. An additional MOA that was distributed to Mr. Ohanian and to the town manager, which is also included in your. Pack. But I will take the occasion to read it. It says, the Grantham Group and Junction Village ALF Limited agrees that the town of Concord's contribution to the project should be limited to this TIF agreement. And the, and the $2 million contribution previously voted by Concord Town Meetings. The company agrees that whether it is acting as Junction Village ALF Limited Partnership, or as Grantham Group LLC. Or as Christopher Heights of Concord and Junction Village, or as any other entity that owns or manages a property. That it shall not seek any time of, any type of additional direct or indirect financial support of any kind from the town of Concord for this project. I distributed this to Mr. Ohanian, and he immediately agreed that that was perfectly acceptable to him. And I distributed to the town manager, and both of them have signed that additional MOA. So the question for us, and I'm happy to take comments first, is the motion that will be before us as to whether we want to reconsider our position on Article 16. So I'm happy to hear from any members of the select board. Susan?
Hi, thank you. Thank you for drafting this MOA. My concern about it is that it's the same vehicle that the memorandum of agreement is the same document or type of document. That there was disagreement about interpreting when we signed the 2017 one. So I'm wondering what kind of TIF this has and why it couldn't be an actual, well, two questions. Has the town council looked at it? Second, why can't it be in the actual TIF? Because I think we have to do our, our best to, even though we're not technically an investor, to protect our financial interests. And I, and this, doing another memorandum of agreement seems to me not to, just not to have the weight that it would have if it was in. And not be enforceable.
All right.
Oh, yes, I want to thank Mr. Ohanian for his willingness to. Be flexible and Mike for drafting that MOA. My suggestion, in fact, was though originally, I think yesterday, what what Susan just said. My suggestion, in fact, was though originally, I think yesterday, what, what Susan just said, I think it should be included in the TIF. And, and that is the language that I would like to see. And I also feel that it's very, very crucial that town council very carefully review the TIF. This time going forward, we want all the I's T crossed, we want all the Ts crossed. We don't want any more questions. We've had missteps in the past. If we're going to move forward, let's make sure we're crystal clear, everybody. And the more I looked at the TIF, there was an item 11 that said it only applied something about item eight, nine. I, I think really that council should take a look at putting this into the TIF and reviewing it as a whole be, before the town approves it, or at least before the select board signs.
Stephen?
So just, I just want to make a quick comment on the, on the, really what is, what really constitutes an amendment to the MOA that Walter and I signed today. And I just wanted to make a quick comment about what, why that's different than what we had 2017. And so in 2017, it said that the developer refused to request any financial support from the town other than the town funds for the construction. Basically, the town funds that were contemplated in that MOA. You know, I think there was a healthy discussion that I observed about whether or not the TIF constituted additional financial support. My, my view of it was it, it did not because of the way the financing and the deal was constructed and it is, and it is a complicated deal. But I could also understand the viewpoint that it certainly appeared to be financial assistance. So I think if it, if it really comes down to me to one word, and that is indirect. And that's what this agreement that we signed really clarifies, direct or indirect, because if you said, if you asked me, is a TIF an indirect financial support for the project? Yes, I do believe a TIF is an indirect financial support. I don't think it's a direct financial support in the context of this specific project. And that's a, you know, I don't want to re-litigate that here, but now I do think that in that one paragraph, at least for me, it has satisfied my concerns that we're not going to get, oh yeah, and now another thing. It, that we really have sealed the deal, so to speak, with the developer and the expectations. And I think that should be clear to him as well.
I think, thank you. I would just say that I, I can't imagine that the town would have any tolerance whatsoever. If we agreed to this and brought it to town meeting and sometime in the future, the project came forward with some additional requests, I just can't, I can't fathom how the town would view with, view that. And I agree with Stephen. I think the language, which I think was supplied by Terry and not me. It's the direct or indirect financial support of any kind. I don't see how there's any, any ambiguity in, in that statement. So others?
Just, just has town council looked at this?
This paragraph?
Yeah.
I haven't sent it to town council, Stephen, did you? I'm happy to send it to him.
Yeah, I mean, I think it'll be a part of the, I think I do agree with the idea that really it should be appended to the 2017 MOA and the 17, the 2017 MOA as amended. Should be a part of, I mean, they have an attachment for the site, for the site locus. Could this be attached as an, an appendix to the TIF agreement? And I, I don't know if the, I guess, if there's a technical reason why that can't happen, we'll have to, we'll have to find that out. But I do think the council should review the whole package.
I don't, I don't, there may, there may be a reason because this TIF agreement, I think we can get it to council, that's for sure. This TIF agreement is one that is submitted to the Commonwealth as part of an economic development plan. So there may be some, there may be some restrictions on what can be said in it. But I think the intent here is fair, pretty clear. So whether or not we, whether we're not, I mean, I'm happy, I will send this to Mina right after our meeting is over today. And ask him if it could be, if it could be included in the TIF agreement. And if it can, last time I checked the participant list, Mr. Ohanian was on it. Mr. Ohanian, if you're there, you, I suspect there's no objection to this if it can be being added to the TIF agreement itself. And I don't, I thought he was on the call, but I can't imagine that he would object to it. He was very.
Unless he's one of the phone numbers he's not on.
I think he is one of the phone numbers. As I recall, it's that, it's the phone number that ends in 8001.
Which is muted.
Which is muted, and I don't think I can unmute him. Well.
Carrie?
I'm happy to go forward with the idea.
But he's, we can hear him now.
Oh, great. So thank you. I apologize, everyone. I was having connectivity issues with Zoom. So thank you so much for taking this up again for discussion and.
Were you on, were you on and able to hear the question I posed to you, Walter?
Yeah, I have absolutely no concern whatsoever with this being added to the TIF agreement that eventually the select board. And I will sign on behalf of the partnership, should it get approved at town meeting, that wouldn't be a concern with me whatsoever. Just to reiterate with what Stephen had mentioned, I just don't know whether or not the state would have any issue with that. You know, a technical point that something like that couldn't be added to it. But obviously, there's no issue with the state having that attached as an addendum. It's not an issue for me whatsoever.
Okay, thank you very much.
Um, Mike, should you just ask for his name and?
For the record, Walter, would you identify yourself?
Yep, sure. Walter Ohanian, 488 Elm Street, Concord, Mass, developer and manager from Grantham Group, which is the agent to the assisted living being proposed.
Thank you. Terry?
Again, Walter, thank you very much for agreeing to this. And I think as soon as council can figure out the legalities and it can be hopefully added some way to the TIF. I for one would be willing to reconsider the vote on this article.
Let me.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay, I, so I'm, I'm wondering if we, you know, just, we're just getting close to town meeting and I want to see if we can try to get this matter resolved. Can we try to go forward with it with some kind of understanding that if, if it is possible to add this to the TIF agreement according to town council and doesn't violate some rule about language and a TIF going to the Commonwealth, that that's what we'll do. And agree that we're going to do that. And the only reason we keep with this little one paragraph one is if either the application requirements for the Commonwealth or town council says, don't do it that way, do it like this. So I got, I'm asking a question, I guess. So what I'm hearing is if, if we can get this, if it's, if it's possible to get this into the TIF. Terry, you, you said you would reconsider the vote, right? Is that true for you, Linda?
Yes, it is. I, I voted affirmatively the first time around.
Susan, is that true for you?
Yes.
And Jane, for you? All right, so why, why don't we, why don't, here, let me propose something. So what we'll do is we'll move to reconsider our position on Article One. And when we move affirmative action, if that's what we do on Article 16, it will be conditioned on including this, or language to this effect in the TIF or, or this particular language. And so our vote will be contingent upon that. And then we'll get, we'll get some resolution from town council and be able to report back to the select board. That seem reasonable?
When would you want to take the vote?
I'd take the vote now. We will first move to reconsider our position on Article 16. And that would be a straightforward do we or don't we? And assuming we decide we will, then we'll vote affirmative action and affirmative action will be conditioned upon either including that paragraph, if it's allowable, including that paragraph into a redrafted TIF agreement. And if not, then the document will sort of stand as it is. Looking to see if that meets everybody's needs. Susan?
So. If the document doesn't stand with that inclusion, I just want to make sure that where that this is enforceable or, you know, I, I understand your point about, I don't think the town has any appetite for any, any additional asks, but I think it's, my vote is conditioned upon that, conditional upon that approval. And town council's review?
I agree.
Town, yes, of course. But what if town council says, no, it can't go in the TIF?
Well, what do we?
We all have said that we want it in the TIF, at least I think we all said. In the TIF if it can be. And there's two possible reasons it can't be. Council says it's not the legal way to do it, whatever that means. Or when he reviews the economic development rules about what is being submitted, this is something that can't be part of it. I don't know why not, but. So that's, otherwise it's going in the TIF. Yeah, Terry?
Well, I have a feeling that it will be allowed. And if not, that town council will come up with some other creative way to accomplish what we want here. Like one thing that Stephen, I think, suggested was that it's an appendix to the TIF. Or I, I, I have faith that town council will figure out and suggest to us that, that we don't only have two options, and it's in the TIF or it's a standalone document. But somehow town council will accomplish kind of ironclad, no questions asked thing that we want to accomplish here. So I think we should let town council take a stab at it. And I'm pretty optimistic they will figure out something that works. But having the standalone document, I, I have to agree with Susan. I, I know, I'm a little nervous about that. I would rather have it in the TIF or at least some other mechanism that town council can come up with.
So what I'm trying to, to figure out, if I've heard, is without, you know, town council's not on the call. We don't know how he's going to rule on this. And we're really talking practically about Terry and Susan's vote. Are you guys able to vote tonight? Not withstanding the fact that we don't have town councils? Could we vote next Tuesday, which will give town council at least a little time to look it over and give us some feedback? I know that's not what you want to hear, but. I want us to.
Nothing to do with what I want to hear is what the pleasure of the board shows.
Well, I want to make sure that the town is protected from any future asks.
I think the way the town protects itself from other future asks is to stand up and vote no.
Well, then that would mean in my mind, voting no against the TIF because the 2017 document in the, I know it's a split opinion about whether that was adhered to or not. So. That's my problem.
I hear it. And Terry, is that your problem too?
Uh, yeah, I think the easiest thing would be to wait for next Tuesday. You know, we're trying to craft some kind of wording that would let us get it done for today. And we might be able to get there, but so far the way it was crafted of either being in the TIF or the standalone document didn't quite work for me. So I don't know of how much time it's worth us trying to craft an exact motion. And it would be a lot cleaner to wait for Tuesday to see what council says.
Okay. I will write to council as soon as this is over. And Linda?
Mike, if that's the direction that is needed at this point, I would be willing to meet at an earlier select board, rescheduled select board meeting prior to next week.
All right. Well, I suspect we all would probably be willing to do that if we had some kind of opinion by council. I guess for, for Susan and for Terry, maybe, maybe Mina will be able to come up with something, but I guess I'm. I, I guess I am having trouble. It's not a problem. So we'll, we'll postpone this. We'll deal with it after you've heard from Mina. But I've never heard of an ironclad document, but somebody could try to weasel their way around. So I, I thought this was worded about as ironclad as you could get it. Direct or indirect, I don't know any other kind of financial assistance there is besides direct and indirect. And the words any kind, I, I, any, any kind kind of means like, any kind. So, all right, we will, I will get this material to town council. And.
Can I, Mike, I, I, I think, I'm sorry, I, I mean, I'm, I don't think, if, if, if council says it can't be in the TIF, I don't think it means that that agreement isn't in effect in that, that new restriction we have is, it's in effect because we agreed to it in the way that we did agree to the MOU that governed the project starting in 2017. I think the, the point was to just clarify the language in a way that was unclear or not clear enough in the 2017 MOA. And I think we accomplished that. I do agree that for the purposes of having everything bound together for the future, it helps. But I don't think if council says a TIF document is a specific thing with these components, and this isn't one of those components. I don't think that means that we're now all of a sudden not in agreement that there's going to be no more direct or indirect financial assistance. I just want to make, I just want to make sure that we're all kind of on the same page on that, because that's how I view it. And I want to make sure that I'm viewing it the same as everybody else.
I think what Susan is looking for is in her, in her view of this, in her view of this, that this language isn't sufficiently strong enough for, for her to conclude that the town is protected and that's perfectly legit. So maybe, maybe town council will say it can't go in the TIF. But if that's what you're trying to do, this is the kind of language you should use. And so if that's what he says, we'll redraft this MOA that both of you guys signed and deal with it that way. And that seems reasonable to me. Does it seem reasonable to you, Susan?
Yes.
All right. So that's what we're going to do. And what I would like though, is I would like a motion to approve the changes made in the TIF. Because so far, those are just things I did. So I need a motion to approve as submitted to you with the additional change that I mentioned to you earlier about striking the word millions after the $19 million, which is stated in the fourth whereas and in. It also appears on page three, item three, and it says 19,998,525 million. it also appears on page three, item three, and it says 19,998,525 million. And it just should say dollars. So I would entertain a motion to approve the changes in the TIF presented to you with the amendment presented this evening. Linda, could you?
Mike, I assume you mean as amended?
Well, there's two amended, the, the amendments are the ones that were distributed. Correcting the cap on the TIF from 2.65 to $2 million and changing the percentage allocation from 77% to 69.21%. And then the two changes deleting the words millions and inserting the word dollars.
Mike, I have a question. I'm not really sure why we are approving the exact language of the TIF now. Because in the warrant article says, it uses the term in substantial form as shown at the town clerk's office.
I think town moderator would claim that going from 3 million to 2 million is a
Correct.
Is a change.
Okay, right, but the reason that I want town, I want town council to look at the whole thing before we sign it, which if it's approved at town meeting, then it will come back to the select board and, or, or the town manager to sign. And there are various things that I really think town council needs to look at. And I, I am not ready to approve every single word in this TIF at this moment without hearing from council. And I think, but definitely going from the 3 million to the 2 million is a very nice move by Mr. Ohanian, and I support that. But I don't think that we should vote on the exact wording of this TIF this time.
Where are the rest of you on this? Linda?
You know, I, I respect, because of the, the history of where we, long history of where we've been on this project. I, I, I respect the, the concerns of my colleagues and so forth. But I think some very definite steps were taken with this most recent MOU agreement with some very specific language there. I think we've now, it's now been public about the changes to the TIF amounts in terms of changing both the, the percentage, the, the number of years and the cap on the total amount of the exemption. And you, you know, I, I think, you know, it's, it's very specific. And so while I hear that, then to give you comfort on, on the, having legal counsel look at the TIF in terms of the specific conclusion of that language, I think that shouldn't prevent us from moving forward on, on, on approval of the, the TIF amendment with the typo corrections. That's my viewpoint.
I just have one question. Has town council ever reviewed this document?
I don't know. I think he has in the context that he reviews all articles that are on the town warrant. But I don't recall a specific statement from him before.
Thank you. I, I don't, I don't know that he has or hasn't. Again, I'd, let's put it this way, if we voted to amend the, the TIF agreement as is, as with Mike's changes today and town council in his review of the entire, of, of this in its entirety, had specific issues, I am assuming we would revisit the TIF agreement, period. Correct?
If town council would propose changes to it.
Right.
Or council agreed that some language like was proposed in that most recent MOA could be included in it. Yes, so there, I didn't hear your.
So I, I guess I don't see the danger in, in this action.
And Susan, you, Terry, I thought we'd already heard your view on it, but go ahead.
Right, I really don't want to belabor this, and I held up bringing this up. Because I, I agree with everything that you, you've just said, Jane. And I agree with everything Linda said about changing it from 3 million to 2 million. All of those things we agree to. The problem that I didn't want to bring up, but I'm going to bring up now, just so you see what I'm talking about. I'll do it quickly. When I wrote that language and I suggested putting it in the TIF, I tried to figure out where it would go in the TIF. And in doing so, I actually started looking at it more carefully. And I see this number 11 that I really don't understand. I'm just going to read it. The matters described above as obligations of the company, which is Grantham or Christopher Heights, are only conditions to the eligibility for tax exemptions under this agreement do not create any enforceable obligations or covenants of the company. The toll, the town's sole remedies for failure by the company satisfy any of its obligations and conditions are the procedures set forth in paragraphs B8 through B9 above. So I don't want to read through eight, nine, I've read them through a few times. And I'm really, the more I'm looking at this, the more I really think that the board has a real duty to get our attorney to figure this out first. That we should not sign off until we really understand some of these conditions that are in here.
All right. So I would entertain a motion, and Linda, if you've got the language, to approve the changes in this TIF as outlined in the memorandum in the packet and the corrections that were made this evening.
Um, move affirmative action on the amendment.
No affirmative action, just vote, vote to approve.
Thank you. Move to approve the amendments for the TIF that were included in today's packet, including the typos that were pointed out.
A second.
Second.
So further discussion. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Lawson? Ms. Ackerman?
No.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
Thank you. I note that passes four to one. I will submit the paragraph that was agreed to by the town manager, Mr. Ohanian, along with the TIF agreement to council and ask him to please review this, do a couple of things. One, to review the TIF. I'm just so surprised that a brand new issue being brought up about a TIF that is been before us in two public hearings. But in any event, I'll ask him to review the TIF and then to review the memorandum that the town manager, Mr. Grantham, signed and ask if language to that effect or language similar to that that protects the town from any other contributions financially from the Grantham Group indirect or direct or any kind can be included in the TIF. And third, if it can't be included in the TIF, would town council propose different language that would better protect the town going forward? Do I have that? Right? All right. Thank you all very much. Next item we're going to discuss is the amendment to Article 16. And as you know, that is an amendment that we heard was going to be proposed by Ms. Reed that would reduce the duration of the TIF from 15 years to 10 years. Ms. Reed is with us. Is that, did I get it wrong?
Yeah, it's not the length, it's the dollar amount that I believe, but I'll let Carlin explain.
Go ahead. Ms. Reed, for the record, identify yourself.
Thank you. Carlin Reed, 83 Woodson. The amendment that is currently posted on the town's website reduces the exemption cap to $2 million, and that is the amendment that I believe is under discussion. However, in light of the board's very recent vote, 401, for revising the TIF to the, to the $2 million mark, I am withdrawing my amendment. So that amendment is no longer in effect, and I will convey that same information to the town moderator, Carmen Reese, as soon as this meeting is finished. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Reed. So I take it we don't need to discuss that. The next item on our agenda is the election officer appointments. This is a continuation of an item we took up last time. Jeremy, do you want to explain why this is here again for us?
Yep, so it's just new election officers that Cory is looking to appoint in the MO isn't that good?
Right. So it's just an addition from what we saw in our last meeting, is that correct?
Yep, it's new people.
Yep, sorry, thank you. Is there any discussion over this matter? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Move to appoint the election officers in the memo dated August 31, 2020, from the town clerk to the select board.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Um, myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
Thank you very much. I note that it passes unanimously. Next is committee appointments. Adam Clark?
Move to appoint Carl Packer. Yes, move to appoint Carl Packer to 86 Butter Nut Circle to the Capital Planning Task Force for a term effective at the conclusion of the 2020 annual town meeting and to expire June 30th, 2021.
Any discussion? Would the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
Thank you. I note that it passes unanimously. Before we go to committee reappointments, I need to provide you with some background. Now, these are all reappointments to the Tax Fairness Committee. And ordinarily, the first ones, Mr. Carr, Mr. Comenza, are being proposed to be reappointed for a second three-year term. The other appointees, Ms. Cronin, Verge, Mr. Bukas, have all served on the committee for six years and ordinarily would not be eligible, according to our traditions, for reappointment to another term. However, the committee is finished with its work with the upcoming item on the agenda for town meeting. And what it has left to do is to consider the future of the committee. Do they want to disband or are there other tax fairness issues that they want to consider? And their view was that if we could leave the remaining committee intact through the annual town meeting in April 2021, that would be much more productive in terms of a conversation about the committee's charge than it would trying to introduce three new members to the committee's work and their future. So I'm asking by having these reappointments presented that way, that we would sort of create a small exception to our six-year term practice for these three individuals. So I wanted to provide that kind of background before I asked the, yes, ma'am, us, Linda.
Mike, may I just ask one question, and that is for the latter three appointments for the one year to finish the discussion, will they, by approving them today, will they be eligible for additional terms?
Well, they have, they will have served two, three-year terms, those six years. Now, there's nothing that prevents somebody from being appointed to another term, but the tradition in Concord is six years and get off the stage and let somebody else do it. So I don't know how to answer the question. Other than that, did I sort of misunderstand you or?
No, you're absolutely right about our tradition and how the terms read. It's when we, when we appoint somebody for a partial term, however, that usually makes them available to be reappointed for full terms. But this is a special circumstance in terms of the amount of time they've already.
Well, I suppose we could come back in March or something of 2021 and say, geez, we can't find anybody else to serve on the committee. So we really wish you would appoint them for an additional two years and eight months. But they would have to come and report to the select board and.
I certainly don't have an issue with the, the contributions they would make for this, this final discussion.
So any further discussion on this matter? Seeing none, would the clerk please read the motion?
Okay. Move to reappoint David Carr of 82 Lossbrook Road and Bill Camasa of 28 Davis Court to the Tax Fairness Committee for terms to expire April 30th, 2023. Nancy Cronin of 216 Garfield Road, Walter Burge of 109 Stonewood Lane, Jonathan Kais of 91 Liberty Street and Rayner Bukes of 1316 Monument Street to the Tax Fairness Committee for terms to expire April 30th, 2021.
A second. Somebody needs to say it.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
Thank you. I note it passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is committee liaison reports. Who would like to begin? So Linda?
I'll try again. Since I, I've attended two recent meetings of the Affordable Housing Trust Study Committee and the major action to support, take votes on support for a couple of other warrant articles related to housing. And that concludes my report.
All right. Susan?
I have two committees to report on. The first is the planning board that met August 25th. And at the, the beginning of the meeting, they, they reviewed the MAPC revised the road depot redevelopment vision and draft zoning presentation. And this is very early in the process. And there was discussion over whether some items should be specific in the bylaw or should be maybe perhaps design guidelines. And the, it was pointed out that there are going to be a number of large and smaller forum, public forums. That's kind of the next phase. And it's like, it would not likely be ready for, for April's town meeting, but would be perhaps 2021. The other business they just discussed was they voted affirmative action on Articles 41 and 42. They discuss an Attorney General open meeting law decision on meeting minutes that from September of 2010, 2019, excuse me. And that is, that's pretty much it. And then the other committee was Trails Committee. That was the, the stewards did the reports on the trails. And Dalia announced that there's a new Trails guidebook that's going to be coming out. And Richard Foreman is the author. And they, someone asked, will there still be the paper maps? And there was a mixed response from the attendees, but I think the DNC was leading, DNR was leading towards eliminating the paper because of the resources that it requires. They also discussed stewards, Trail stewards' roles. And they said their role is to educate, but not to enforce. And if there are issues, they need. but not to enforce, and if there are issues, they need to report them to Delia. There was a Mass Trails grant that was not approved for rifle range, but they may apply for CPC funds next year for that. And that's pretty much, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Jane, Lynn, or Terry? Jane?
Why don't I go? I'm, I'm not going to report on the White Pond Advisory Committee meeting, since I think that that was fully covered in our, in the town manager's report. But I also attended the Climate Action Advisory Board's meeting and, which was a largely a prep for town meeting, including the withdrawal of Article 40 and a discussion of the Healthy Buses for Concord Students article, both of which, while are not, they're not articles of the Climate Action Advisory Board, they're endorsed by and, and very relevant to the goals of CCA, of CAB. There's also an interesting new program led by the Rocky Mountain Institute or funded by the Rocky Mountain Institute Accelerator. It's an accelerator for building electrification policies. Both Alice Kaufman and Kate Hanley are part of this process. There may be more funding to the town to become involved in it. So it's something I think that I'll be reporting on, assuming that I maintain this liaison ship in the future. But it, it could be very, really very interesting. There's a, a coach available to help municipalities look at building electrification. And other than that, it was really a prep for town meeting and, and also a a discussion of care and outreach from the committee to, to one of the members who is, he is not, he's, he's still in, on the roster, but he's not able to attend for health reasons.
We wish him well.
Yes.
Carrie?
Oh, great segue. I attended the Concord Sustainable Energy Committee, and they voted unanimously to support the Article 30 Healthy Buses article. Kate Hanley at that meeting also wanted everyone to know that she's created a dashboard for a sustainable Concord, which is a dynamic interface for people to get involved and learn more about green home improvements, electric vehicles, et cetera. There's eight, eight or more different sections in there, it's very well done. The library corporation is sponsoring two public meetings to talk about accessible parking at the new expanded library project. The first meeting actually was already held, but the second one will be September 14 at 3:00 PM. And they'd really like people to give community input and, and look at the strategies for parking so that the community can weigh in before they try to go back again to the HDC and figure it out. Finally, I was again at that, at that league women voters meeting last week where several of you were in a, I will try in the future, if there's any kind of public meeting where we think we're going to have town business, I will try to alert the rest of you through Jeremy so we can not have a quorum or post the meeting. That's it.
Thank you. I attended the Tax Fairness Committee, I'm going to report it on their big issue, which was membership. They're also preparing a one-page explanation of Article 15. The, as you might recall, it was originally put on the consent calendar by the moderator, but after consideration of council, the, she viewed that the language in, in the warrant article was too difficult to explain simply, so she's pulled it off the consent calendar and it will be dealt with. I don't think there's going to be an issue with it, but dealt with in numerical order. And then I attended a joint Concord Public Schools and Concord Karla Regional School meeting where the superintendent presented her reopening plan and again, and task force updates. I just must say, the amount of input that she was able to gather and making decisions about the reopening of schools was quite remarkable. So, so that, that's my liaison report. And the next item on our agenda is miscellaneous correspondence, I think we've dealt with that. The next item is public comments. So if you would like to make a comment, unmute yourself and show your face or something like that, so I know who we are and we'll see what we got. It says Mark, but I suspect that's really Tanya. Whomever is going to speak, would you please identify yourself for the record?
Tanya Galis, 62 Prescott Road. I want to thank all of you for a very thoughtful meeting on all sorts of subjects. And I just could not help note and be amused by a statement you made, Mike, which is the only way the town can protect itself from future asks is by voting no on Article 16. I happen to, I happen to agree with that because we, I think we should stay.
I couldn't say that.
You can listen to the meeting, that's what I heard. Anyway, if I am wrong, I'm sorry, that's what I heard. Anyway, I, 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 I believe that I believe that the development will, will stay in town, even if we vote no, and I hope, I hope they do. But I, I thank you all for a very, very thoughtful meeting, thank you.
Can I make one statement? Yes, Mark Galis, 62 Prescott Road. Thanks again, and a really great meeting, glad to hear all this careful consideration. There's one comment I want to make, though, which is I'm, I'm, I find it problematic hearing the town council has not been involved in the creation of the TIF proposal, if I'm hearing it right, because unlike the tax credit, which is, can you hear me? Unlike the Massachusetts tax credit, which is applied for by the developer for the, you know, to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development, the TIF is applied for by the town, as I understand it. I could be wrong, but I think it's applied for by the town. So it's really the town's responsibility to make sure everything's all shipshape. Thank you.
Thank you, it is the town's responsibility. They will submit the TIF and they will, the select board and sometime in the future will also have to essentially create an economic development zone, which is a necessary development for, for the action. Are there any other public comments? I'm not, I don't see anyone else unmuting themselves, so if, all right, I don't see anymore. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn, not a court. Is there a second?
Second.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Escobedo, aye.
Thank you, I note that it passes unanimously. I appreciate everybody being here this evening, please stay well.